Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 7, 2014, meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swanson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt the meeting agenda discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And then the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Yeah, I'm sure Ms. Katsky was here to see the official newspaper designation for 2014 as the Adana Sun. Well, we're going to move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and we are privileged to have our county attorney here with us this evening, Mike Freeman, and has been here with us the last few years to give us an annual update. And welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much, and I'm honored to come right after the appointment of the Assistant Weed Inspector. In my job, they've suggested that we are supposed to eradicate certain kinds of human weeds, so I'm glad to be up here and to do that, but thank you.
There's a trivia question for you before you start. Who's the chief weed inspector by state law?
Well, I think that's the mayor, isn't it?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members, and Mr. Knutson, who I have known for many, many years and who's able to serve this community, as you're a lawyer, I first want to thank your police officers, and particularly Chief Long. They do a great job. Prosecutors can't do our jobs without great police forces, and you have one, and I also want to thank you for providing them the resources, so you hire good folks and they stay, because this is a good police force. It makes a difference. And I'm bearing good news, partially because of the good work they've done. Since 2006 through 2012, which is the latest complete annual numbers, violent crime in Adana has dropped 65 percent. Let me repeat that. 65 percent. That's phenomenal. The property crime is down about 15 percent, which is good, but when you look at that, the crimes that people feel most unsafe from, in 2012, there were only two rapes and five robberies. It's extraordinary. I mean, it's a really credit to all of the folks here. I mean, burglaries have dropped from 170 to 112. All of this is really good news, and this doesn't happen without the council supporting their police force. It doesn't happen without the citizens being involved, and I'd like to think prosecutors have just a little bit to play in that as well. And I want to say to you that our track record is that of not, the cases we charge, 94 percent are either found guilty or plead guilty. If it was much higher than that, I'm afraid we weren't charging some cases we ought to, because sometimes certain crimes, particularly domestic abuse, deserves to be charged even if they're tough cases to prove. I want to assure you, we don't only go after the easy ones. Tim Dolan, who you all know well, the former Minneapolis Police Chief, said that Joe Senior and Joe Junior and the beat-down posse gang was the worst gang he knew, operating in North Minneapolis. They extorted, they beat people, they were bail bondsmen, and we had to use Rico to take them down, but both Joe Junior and Senior went down, and they're doing big time, each of them. Or the federal government moving out of some of the drug business. We ended up prosecuting a Mexican cartel that had links all the way, not only from Mexico, but California. By the time we were done, the ringleader got 30 years, involving cases of four guns and 7.7 kilos. 7.7 kilos. That's a lot of meth, and we were very proud of that. The second piece of good news I bring you is the prison population in Minnesota is stable and going down. That's not something we could have said for the last 25 years. I think we're getting a lot smarter. First off, the legislature did some really good things, and the number of convictions for people with methamphetamines is way down, because we've made it much harder for folks to buy the components of meth at drugstores. You notice if you went to get your NyQuil, you have to get it from behind the counter, and that's helped to make a big difference. Now, we've also done some other things that I think make sense. We have one of the best drug courts in the country. We find that there are two kinds of drug dealers and users. There's the people who may sell little drugs to feed their own habit, and their problem is addiction. And if their problem is addiction, prison isn't necessarily the place for them, and you can much less expensively and better treat them in a treatment center. But there are other people who sell drugs for greed, and I don't know a treatment program for greed, other than sending them to the big house on the St. Croix River. That takes care of that greed, at least for a period of time. And the question always is trying to draw the line between the addicts and the people who are just greedy. I think we're doing a better job of that, and that's one of the reasons that our prison population is down. We also have a very good veterans court. Tragically, we see so many veterans coming back with mental problems and challenges in their lives, and sometimes those manifest themselves in some of the more minor crimes. They don't need to do time. They need to get the benefits from the VA, they need to have some clear direction, and our veterans court is probably the best in the country. We're kind of proud that we use DNA a lot to solve crimes. DNA is wonderful. It's better than truth serum, because if we have DNA and it matches, if, there's no question that's the only person in the world, absent an identical twin, that could have done the crime. Conversely, I like it, because it also tells us people who didn't commit the crime. The match isn't there, it doesn't matter, a couple of the people thought it. If the match isn't there and the science has been done right, that's not our person. And mistaken identity is one of the biggest challenges for prosecutors trying to do it right. And just recently, you may have read, we're very proud, Robert Schockstedt is going off for another 120 months. Robert Schockstedt raped a woman in 1980. He left a little bit of DNA, but it wasn't enough under the technology that existed. Well, we saved that. And recently, about three years ago, Schockstedt had to leave DNA behind after he was convicted of another crime. There was a cold hit match. We prosecuted him. He's going to be there. He's not well, but he's going to be there for the rest of his life, and he deserves it. And the family of the victim, the family of the victim finds peace once. And it, you know, and the end result wasn't an expensive prosecution. What we need is the DNA match, and so we do that. I remain very concerned about gun violence in this country. We simply haven't done some of the things we ought to do, and I speak to you as a person who's a hunter and a sportsman. You know, my shotguns are locked up at home, and long before we had concealed carry, I could have gotten a permit to carry handgun, but I use the muscles between my nose and my chin a lot better than I use my trigger finger. And I leave the handguns to the police officers that ought to do them. There were just way too many guns. The people who really caused us the most problems are people who already have committed a felony, and when you commit a felony, you'll lose your right to carry a gun. We need and we try to force enforce those as clearly as we can. But let me give you a little example where the law is inadequate and a little change will make a difference, which I tried to get through the legislature last time, and it got all tied up in a bunch of mess. And that is, I was with Minneapolis Police on the north side, and saw one of those little rider cars in the Detroit slide, and there were three people in the car, and the taillight was out. And the officer said, "Well, I bet you we got a couple felons, I'd bet you we'd find a gun." We legitimately stopped him. We walked up the car, and all of a sudden, something silver flashes out the passenger window. Well, we subsequently found it was a nine millimeter. We couldn't prove who had the gun in the car, because they threw it out. You couldn't tell who did it. But two of the individuals were felons, and both of them had ammunition for that nine millimeter in their pocket. Now, tell me why anybody ought to be carrying ammunition for a gun when they can't carry a gun. I want that change. I want to be able to put those people away, because those are the folks, the folks who are felons and have committed crimes, have lost their right to carry a handgun, and we ought to be able to put them behind bars if they violate that very simple thing. You can't have a handgun, and you ought not to carry ammo either. So I'm going to be back at the legislature, and we're going to try to do that again. Let me conclude with a couple crime prevention things. 98 percent of the young people who commit a crime are true and first. It does not take a rocket scientist to figure out, if we can keep those kids in school, they're less likely to commit crimes. Our Be at School program is a nationally rated program, and we focus on the reasons that a kid's not going to school. The elementary school kids, why is the eight-year-old not going to school? Is it because mom expects, or dad expects, them to babysit the one and three-year-old during the school day? But wait a minute, we all have jobs, and the job of an eight-year-old is to go to school and learn. And so what we're doing is working with those parents to figure out how we can get that kid back to school. Maybe it's shoes, maybe it's bus money, maybe it's the parent or parents didn't have much chance or success in school and don't want to do it. That isn't their choice, and I'm pleased that we have made a real difference with the kids in school. We also try to work very hard to divert young people in their first mistake with the law. Adana resident Tim Dolan would tell you if he were here, just like little Mikey Freeman might tell you his story about when he was caught when his father was governor of Minnesota doing something stupid. Okay? I was lucky. I had a Marine Corps, former Marine Corps Colonel father who scared the hell out of me, and I never did anything like that stupid again, but I was lucky, I had a dad, and some of these kids didn't. And a smart cop knew the worst thing that ever happened to me was for my father to pick me up at the police station. But I don't have a juvenile record. I didn't need to have one. Your police officers do a pretty good job of juvenile diversion, and we encourage them. When I became county attorney, the year before I came, there were 2,100 disorderly conducts out of the schools in Hennepin County. That's silly. There are not that many serious crimes there, and we end up diverting them anyway. We talked to the schools and said, "Give us the ones that are really problematic, and we will deal with them in a thoughtful, systematic, and expedient way, but don't fill us up with a whole lot of cases that we're not going to be able to handle." Well, your school system and the rest of them are doing that, and we're doing a better job making sure kids don't have records, because we're diverting those kids. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the work is good. We've made some real progress. We continue to have work to do, and I just want to thank you for your all's commitment in funding a police force that is first-rate and encouraging your citizens to report crimes. We can't do this, nor can your police do it alone, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Freeman. Questions for our county attorney?
Yeah.
Great report, and thank you so much for coming to see us again. Nice to hear those crime stats.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next portion of the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to reports and recommendations. The first item there, 7A, is a resolution 2014-09, supporting the Move Minnesota campaign. I put at your places, I've got one, too, thanks, a modified resolution of support for the Move Minnesota campaign. I did this both with respect to a request made by the Move Minnesota campaign, as well as the Regional Council of Mayors, which asked me to take a, to create a draft that was different than the one that was the Richfield-style resolution. There was some concern about the form of the other resolution that mentions the $50 billion transportation deficit. So I recrafted this, and I wanted fellow council members to look at it, to see if that would be something that our council could support from a concept standpoint. So, does anyone have any questions on this? We did get a report on the activities of Move Minnesota with our lobbyists for the MLC upstairs in our work session meeting. Member Bennett?
So, Mayor, the whereas bullet point about comprehensive funding you've captured in your first whereas, leaving two of the four bullet points emphasizing that any funding be balanced across transportation modes and balanced regionally between greater Minnesota and the Twin Cities metropolitan area, using that word equitably, I think, which is also important, and then the second point is sustainable, providing long-term solutions.
That's correct, and I did not use that language, dedicated to transportation, because I thought by its very nature, we would be working on something that would, you know, not involve funding going into the general fund. It would involve potentially money dedicated solely to the improvement of our transportation infrastructure system, so. Does someone?
I'll move this resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt a resolution of support for the Move Minnesota campaign. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next, we have our usual form of resolution when we have donations to the city or potential donations. We need to receive those in an official capacity as the council. Resolution 2014-08, accepting donations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Adana. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And just a couple of highlights, there are donations this reporting period to the Adana Arts Center, Bremar Memorial Fund, Adana Finance Department, which was voluntary payment in lieu of taxes, and then the Adana Fire Department and the Adana Police Department, both got a nice contribution from the NC Little Memorial Hospice, run by Bob Solheim, and that's quite a fine organization, so we thank NC Little Hospice for that, for those contributions. Member Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note that in all, in the seven, now going into my eighth year on council, I believe that we have received a donation from Mount Olivet Rolling Acres every one of those years in lieu of property taxes, and that's very much appreciated for a non-property tax-paying entity to contribute in recognition of the public service it receives from the city every year. Very much appreciated.
Thank you for those comments. All right, we've got a motion and a second. We've had an approval. Next, the, we've got some reappointments to take care of with respect to advisory boards, commissions, and committees. Is there a motion with regard to that matter?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on Agenda Item 7C. Any discussion with respect to these potential reappointments? Member Brindle?
Just one, and just due to the placement on the page, I just want to make sure that everyone notes that Allison Pence appears in the second column, and she is, when this is approved, being reappointed to the Community Health Committee, which is at the bottom of the first column.
Oh, good, good point.
Good, thank you. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And then we have a resolution 2014-10, which deals with rescission of some acquisition authority for the property at 3944 West 49 and 1/2 Street. Did anyone have any language issues or comments with regard to the proposed form of the resolution or inquiries they wanted to make of the fellow council members? I had one, if no one else had any, I guess maybe a couple. On the second whereas clause on page one, it was uncertain about the factual circumstances there, beginning with that language following the language, resolution 2013-81, where it says only after learning that the owners of the subject property intended to retire and close their business.
True as for our timing.
Okay. All right, that satisfies that inquiry that I had. I just want to make sure from a timing standpoint that it was accurate.
I think it's accurate as to the timing.
Okay. And then over on page two, third whereas clause from the top.
Under the owners prefer to pursue.
Yeah, the owners prefer to pursue this alternative transaction. I was wondering about whether we should strike the words, instead of continuing negotiations with the city, so that it would read, whereas the owners prefer to pursue this alternative transaction because the acquisition price negotiated for this alternative transaction exceeds the purchase price offered by the city. Or if that continuing negotiation with the city language was important to have in there.
We've actually never seen a, their signed contract, so we are assuming that it is more than the offer. We've never seen anything, I don't believe that we've seen their appraisals, I don't believe that we've seen, that we were given access to, so we are.
It's been an assertion that we have been privy to, but no actual information.
We've been told, and we're proceeding on the basis of that information. Yes, right, which is hard to say that you're proceeding on the basis of information that's been verbal, but nothing in writing.
So, Roger, I'm wondering about whether you think we should have some modified language in that whereas clause, third whereas clause.
How about we just put in may exceed?
You could do that, or you could just eliminate that whereas clause.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, is it doesn't, I don't know whether what the owners prefer has a place in this resolution.
Well, we are, we have asked a number of times to their asking for a continuation of time to pursue an alternate agreement. I think this is in recognition that they have asked for that, so I don't have a problem with this whereas clause, but.
So, we could adopt Member Swanson's suggestion, and at the end of line two, after the words "alternative transaction," add the language, add the word "may," and then change exceeds plural to singular. We could also add in some language where it says because, in the second line, instead of continuing negotiations with the city, because the city understands.
Or the owners have stated that they prefer to pursue.
Because it's.
Because the acquisition.
It's been represented to the city.
I think that's the crux or the core of what everyone's saying. I think everyone is saying the same thing, so there's a common understanding. The question is, how is that expressed in the clearest terms?
Well, I guess the way I would feel comfortable with it in the second line, put a period after city and get rid of the rest of it. The owners prefer to pursue this alternative transaction instead of continuing negotiations with the city, period.
Well, that's true, but the crux of our withdrawing at this point is that the cost of trying to purchase it way exceeds the value to us of being able to put parking in and the cost per.
Stall.
Stall that that would bring us. So I think that the price is important to why this is, why we're doing this resolution, so I think we have to recognize that in some form. And it also goes to the utility of continuing negotiations, because again. Right. Extensions were sought and accepted, and the city continued to engage in negotiations until the purported price exceeded what would be a cost effect of public expenditure. Correct.
What about if we modify the very beginning of it by saying, whereas it has been represented to the city that the owners prefer to pursue, blah, blah, blah?
I'd be fine with that.
I'm fine with that as well.
And then are we still doing may and exceed?
I think we could do that as well.
Well, actually, it has been represented, but it does exceed.
Yeah, so eliminate the word "may."
Okay.
Go back to the original language and just have the introductory language read.
Because we're already talking.
It has been represented to the city that the owners prefer, and then continue the rest of the language.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a, with that modification, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And now, the first big sketch plan review of 2014. Quite an exciting evening here to hear what folks are thinking about in terms of next steps on Pentagon Park, and Director Teague, you have the introduction on this matter.
Thank you, thank you, members of the council. A site that you're all very familiar with. This is the Pentagon Park property, located south of the Fred Richards Golf Course. It's 43 acres in size, essentially divided into two areas. As shown on the screen here, the west side is the Pentagon Tower Site, where there's the six-story office building, the Burgundy Place Apartments, Walsh Title Building, and then the Pentagon Quad Site, located south of the golf course here. So again, 43 acres in size.
I have a question for clarification.
Sure.
It was my understanding that the Burgundy Place wasn't part of Pentagon Park or part of what Hillcrest is working with, but, I mean, has that changed?
It has not changed. It's part of the, back in 2008, all of the properties that are highlighted on the screen were rezoned to MDD-6.
Okay, so we're thinking about the original situation here.
Yes.
Is what you're doing, okay.
Yep, just for background, just pointing out.
Okay, thank you.
So that kind of leads into this next slide here. This was the overall development plan that was approved back in 2008 for that entire 43 acres. So this is the Burgundy Place that we were talking about, and it was included. So the overall development plan called for a mixture of use for housing that was to be low, senior housing located south of the golf course. This area here, it was to be over 500 units of senior housing, and the Pentagon Tower Site was programmed for two 12-story office buildings and potentially a 10-story hotel located in this site right here. That actually received final approval, I believe it was eight stories, but nothing built.
And that hotel site, is its limit on its height 12, as far as the comp plan goes?
Correct. Under the current zoning, 12 stories is the max for the entire site.
Well, we did approve a hotel at A.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, but the approvals expired when it wasn't built, so that has gone away, but.
And was that at the height that Member Swanson just alluded to?
I believe it was eight stories.
It was eight stories.
Okay.
With two 12s around it. Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
So, along with the approval of this overall master development plan, there was an environmental review done, the A U A R, or Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, and that was updated this past summer. There were four development scenarios that were considered as part of that A U A R, just to quickly move through them. The first alternative was what the comprehensive plan allowed at that time, prior to the rezoning of the site. That was to allow, on these 43 acres that we're talking about this evening, would have allowed up to about 1.1 million square feet. The second alternative was the master development plan that we just saw on the screen for the mixture of uses with the residential in this location and the non-residential. That was to allow up to about 1.8 million square feet. That was to be divided equally amongst the housing and the office space. The third alternative was more just for the non-residential type uses. That allowed or contemplated up to 2.6 million square feet, and again, that was all non-residential, as highlighted in the purple, and then the light purple here. The fourth alternative looked at predominantly housing over the entire site. So the sketches that you're looking at this evening fall a little bit closer to that third alternative, but not going to that maximum density of about 2.6 million square feet. So what the applicant will be showing this evening is two development alternatives, this being the first. The land use is proposed over these sites doesn't change in either of the alternatives. The changes that you'll see depend upon the use of the Fred Richards Golf Course. So this first sketch contemplates Fred Richards staying as is today as a golf course. The second alternative contemplates a different use for the golf course, remaining public, but the development more integrated into the proposed development and providing some better connections to and from both the public space and the uses on both sides of 77th. And I'll let the applicant go into a little more detail on that. In regard to height, what they're contemplating here is four stories along the golf course in this kind of lighter yellow shaded area, five stories along 77th. While the zoning contemplates a maximum of four stories for that site, the comp plan allows up to 12. stories for that site, the comp plan allows up to twelve. For the tower site, they're contemplating twelve stories, again, for the tower site, but are highlighting here a potential for a hotel site that may exceed twelve stories. That would require a comprehensive plan amendment. Nothing specific proposed at that time, but just want to point that out, that that may be a possibility in the future.
Did I hear you say that C and D were twelve in the comp plan?
Yes.
The line was Seventy-sixth Street, and there was that area west of France, but south of Seventy-sixth, the height in the comp plan went back up.
But the zoning is restricted to four stories on that site.
Right.
So just to quickly highlight some of the current zoning versus a proposed PUD, which is what the applicant will be pursuing. Likely would be pursuing some flexibility with the setback requirements and bringing the buildings up to the street. That was contemplated as part of the original development in 2008. Again, the four to five-story height that we just talked about, the biggest difference really is moving away from the fifty percent non-residential and fifty percent residential into more of a entirely non-residential. Now, this area is guided in the comprehensive plan for office and residential. While the residential market may not be great right now, we want to allow that flexibility in the future. So we'd like to reserve that right for potential housing on this site. The applicant is willing to include that as part of the PUD, whereas if the, if the market changes, that that possibility still would exist under the PUD. So with that, just to quickly outline the process, they'll be completing the sketch plan review. This was brought to the Planning Commission, their last meeting, and those minutes have been included in your packet. They'd like to submit an application the end of this month for a February, end of February Planning Commission review. That would be forwarded on to the City Council for your second meeting in March, if all goes well, assuming all goes well. So then they would obtain a preliminary PUD rezoning for the entire site. Then they would come back for a second step, for final rezoning, potentially, could be the tower site. So we'd be looking at a final rezoning for that site, potentially a change to the overall development plan, depending on how that goes. But the applicant is also anticipating, before they do that, they would come forward with a sketch plan for that final rezoning to get additional comments from the Planning Commission and Council. So that's a little bit about the process that's anticipated. With that, I can stop here and answer any questions, or we could have the applicant come up for their presentation.
Question, excuse me, questions for Director Teague right now? Okay.
Question?
Yeah, Member Swenson.
Considering that the land north of Seventy-seventh along the Fred is, the comp plan allows twelve, but the zoning limits it to five, four?
Four.
Four. What happens if we change it to a PUD, as far as those heights go?
You could, you could limit it specifically. I mean, it could get down to as detailed as having a four-story or two-story limit on the north half here, and a separate limit to the south here. With a PUD, we can build in that flexibility.
And when is the time to build that flexibility?
That would really be at the time of final rezoning. We want to set the stage for the preliminary approval and be specific about what the city's looking for, for the next step. But it would be that second step where we would put it into ordinance form.
So we should talk about it tonight, but we're not, but any vote on it would come in March?
Correct.
Or end of February, or whenever it is that it comes up for a vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Tankenoff, are you going to lead off?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to see you again. My name is Scott Tankenoff, and I'm the managing partner of Hillcrest Development. Thank you again for allowing us to come forward and speak with you about Pentagon Park, and talk with you during the sketch plan review process here tonight. So what we'd like to do is talk specifically about the pending application for PUD. And we've been working pretty hard with the city and with staff to go over, at this point, what is appropriate for Pentagon Park, and how do we look at the zoning, as well as a number of other approvals for Pentagon Park. And I think it's fair to say that we've agreed with staff that the PUD is really the appropriate form to look at Pentagon Park and how to get this property redeveloped and into its most useful life and purpose. The PUD is a two-step process, and it, and I want to talk about the commitments and what we'll be discussing this evening, to provide ample security for the city that the development of Pentagon Park is going to meet all of our mutual expectations, because that's important. It is a two-step process. One point I want to make is, if this was the existing zoning, which is MDD six, we candidly look at the PUD, and we'd say we'd go through the same process. So the, the concept of us going through sketch plan review now for certain characteristics of the, of the process, whether it be height, or density, or the, the type of uses that would go there, that's a part of sketch plan review from our standpoint. But a very important part of sketch plan review that we've interpreted for the city v. Dyna is, you know, what will the development and each part of the development look like? What will the architecture be? What should the setbacks be at that point, at a later time, when we have a specific project, whether it's something that's on the south tower site, or on one of the northerly sites? So from our perspective, we are committing, and we've committed this to the Planning Commission as well, to come back through sketch plan review, which, with each phase of this development. We need the, we need the PUD zoning to be able to know what it is that we've got, but we are prepared, and we're very happy to come back through and work on that collaboratively, just like we have this process. So to the best of my knowledge, when Mr. Kaminsky's, the failed plan was approved, I don't know that the architectural details were attached to that or not, and I think that the concept of us coming through right now for the first phase of the PUD is not inconsistent. This is something where, again, we're going to be, we're going to be back here, and we're going to be back many, many times, working within the community. Some things that we are committed to do is, we're committed to a higher percentage of green space, including stormwater and ponding areas, than, than what is required by code. And I'm going to go through a list of items here that I think candidly, we're all probably pretty familiar with. We call them, many of them are part of the six disciplines that we created, which you'll see a little bit later, when Mr. Close and Mr. Whitlock come back up. And those, those disciplines were all the output, they were all the result of the two-by-two meetings that we had, of the intake that we did with not only you individually, and in sessions of individual, or in two sessions with, with the council, but also with, work with the Planning Commission and a number of work sessions. So, but we're committed to a higher percentage of green space, again, including water and ponding areas and what's required by code. We are committing to stormwater management, a majority of that stormwater management to be an amenity. From the standpoint of an amenity, that's not necessarily a pond, that's an area that people can recreate around. It's an area that people could want to be around, whether they're eating, whether they're exercising, or whether they're simply enjoying, maybe not a night like tonight, or like last night, but we'll call it one of those nicer days in Minnesota. We want to encourage stormwater management, retention, and clarification treatments that's going to be at or above the standards of what's required by code. Those are all important disciplines, and they're all things that, again, were output and results of all of our efforts together. We're going to encourage bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and we need to do more than just hang an outdoor bike rack at a building. We're talking about actually looking at a place that's at Pentagon, at the Pentagon Park location, where people can go if they're working there. They can bring their bike in, whether they have a two-hundred-dollar bike, or a twenty-thousand-dollar bike, because those bikes exist. They need to be able to put it into a locked facility indoors. They need to be able to go to a shower facility that's more than just a single stall. There needs to be a thought of, how do you really encourage single, getting away from single-occupant traffic? Because this is not a high, this is not a high alternative transit area right now. This is an area that, candidly, we have to do some other things if we're going to get away from the single-occupant vehicle. We need to provide upgraded transit shelters, at least a minimum of two, that are different than just the, with all due respect to the Met Council, a bubble. We need to do better than that. We need to do something that's going to be signature. We believe that Seventy-seventh Street needs to be upgraded, and it needs to be upgraded consistent with the November sixth, 2013 plans and details. And that, again, is in the packet that you have in front of you, and you'll see that again when Mr. Whitlock and Mr. Close go through some detail explanation on it. And we want it, we are committing to do that once the first hundred thousand square feet of development has broken ground. We think that that's important, not just waiting for that important public infrastructure to come forward. We think it's important that it needs to be committed to and needs to be done. The Seventy-sixth Parkway and the green streets, those are streets that length that go north and south, as well as Seventy-sixth Parkway, if that is something that does happen. We view that as something that is very likely to happen once the project is approximately eighty to eighty-five percent built out. But again, we feel that that's something that needs to be committed to. So the items that, and I have a few more, but the items that I'm talking about today are items that we're prepared to commit to as part of the first-phase PUD, the first step of the PUD. And again, we think that's important, because we want you to have some context. We need to have some context of what's going to happen here. And just, just knowing what the height that would be allowed, knowing what the density that would be allowed, and knowing what the uses that would be allowed, that's really what we're looking for from the first phase of the PUD. But there needs to be some additional context. And as an example, there probably is going to need to be some context of, maybe there should be certain building materials that don't go there. And one of the comments was, maybe there shouldn't be EFS. Those are all the things that we need to finish discussing with staff, but we need to come up with the right set of criteria of what does and does not happen now. So, as, again, as we look at a few other points here, we need to look at design that's similar and consistent with LEED standards, and we're going to need some more study and some more understanding of that, but that's important to us. The green aspects of this project are very important. And candidly, all of you have voiced how important that is to you. We're going to consider solar, especially on the buildings north of Seventy-seventh Street. Those are lower-rise buildings, and your city already has a really nice solar initiative for your public buildings, as well as privately, that you're trying to encourage people to do. Upgraded streets, upgraded pedestrian access around the south parcel, when the south parcel is approximately eighty percent developed or constructed. That's important, because again, while this is a marvelous location, people need infrastructure. And right now, the infrastructure that's there is just not commensurate with, with what people are going to want with a high-quality development. Upgrading of park lawn, when Pentagon Park, again, is approximately eighty to eighty-five percent completed. That's another important aspect of this, getting those, getting those street areas to be something that a pedestrian, that someone that's on a bike would be happy, would be excited to go and use. That's an important connection. Again, with the sketch plan review of each phase of development, following the preliminary approval, the council, the Planning Commission are going to have multiple opportunities to provide input on the development for each phase, and confirm that the final approval for each phase is consistent with the preliminary approval. So in other words, we're going to be back here again and again. We view that as a plus. The PUD, this request is consistent with your comp guide plan, excluding the potential of the, the concept of that the hotel might be above twelve stories. And I do want to touch on that. The reason that that one shaded area is shaded a little bit different from a green standpoint, we do not know what the hotel height will be. We've heard different things from different people, and I thought it would not be appropriate to come forward and not bring that up. I thought it was more appropriate that we say that's a possibility. You'll need to judge that on the standards and on the quality of what's brought forward. We know you're not making any promise of any sort to provide anything above the twelve stories. If you think it's appropriate, if you think that the design of, of that hotel is right, appropriate, if it were to be above twelve stories, we'd ask that you consider it and look at a comp guide plan change. Otherwise, we know that there's a height restriction of twelve stories. We, we understand that. But it may take something that's a little bit taller. It might be something that complements, but complements in a far greater way, the former Radisson that's off the opposite corner. That's a much taller structure. So we just don't know, and that's why that was framed with more height, potentially. The zoning with, except for the commercial densities, this is consistent with the existing, with the existing zoning. The only difference is that we're looking to, instead of have it be half-residential, half-commercial, we believe that it's not viable unless it is primarily commercial. But to that end, we've heard from staff and several council people about their desire to keep open the possibility for residential. And we do think that that's a good possibility, probably further into the multiple phases of the project, more likely on the north, and probably as it heads toward the east end of the project. At this point, there's not enough infrastructure that somebody would really want to live there. The streets aren't right. There's a number of things that have to be put in place. We think that's a later phase, if it is going to be residential. It's, the, the PUD application is consistent with the A U A R, the amended A U A R, actually anticipated the hundred percent commercial as a possibility, which you already heard from Carrie earlier today. One, a couple of other points. We are in the process of working with city staff and city's consultant, Ellers, in regard to potential tax increment financing for this project. There are a lot of unique challenges with the property and with the infrastructure that's there. And we will be back on February fourth for a work session to talk a little bit about tax increment financing and the plan. And that's on the same timeline as the PUD approval. It's on virtually the same timeline. And to talk for just a moment about timing, while we've been in the city now close to two years, working on this project, and actually, the first time that I spoke before you was in a work session, I believe, on the Fourth of September of 2012. So in a sense, it seems like yesterday, but that's actually sixteen months ago. We feel like we now are on a, on a timeline where we really can affect change. There are a number of reasons why we are bringing the project forward at this time, and one of them is that it has been a monumental effort over the last fifteen, sixteen months to get the dysfunctional pieces of Pentagon Park together, to actually take these fractured pieces that have been put into a dysfunctional position over the last probably twenty-five years of dysfunctional ownership and poor choices. We've got those pieces together, and we now have all the pieces that are necessary to actually move this project forward and start looking at actual demolition of structures that are far past their useful life, and candidly, just blighted beyond belief. And you've all seen that, because you've been in many of them. Our timelines on that run out in April of 2014, because we have tenants that we need to provide notice to, and there are a variety of other things that start to expire for us. So the timing on this is coming up very quickly. I think the good news on this, though, is that we have been here, and we've been working on this very diligently with your staff, as well as with all of you and the Planning Commission, to be sure that we are all up to speed on what this not only is, but what it can be. I guess the couple, the final point I'd like to make is finally on the backside, the final PUD approval, you know, this is a unique redevelopment opportunity, and it's really not practical or beneficial, in my opinion, either for the city or for us, until, to get very specific on what the architecture could be, until we get to each phase. This is going to be a multiple-phase project, and I can't, as I've mentioned before, I can't tell anybody what the architecture is going to be, if it's going to be postmodern, what it's going to be, we flat-out don't know. It truly is going to be market-driven, but it's going to be something that's going to be brought back through with each phase of the development, right back in the, in this room, as well as for the Planning Commission, and as well as with staff as time goes along. So what I'd like to do is, if I, if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to, but I would like to also introduce again Bob Close and Tom Whitlock of Damon Farber, and they're going to go through a very brief explanation of a few additional slides that we have for you today.
Questions for Mr. Tankenoff at this point in time? Okay, thank you. Standby, may have some coming up here for you, as we proceed. Gentlemen, welcome. And Mr. Whitlock and Mr. Close, if you'd both, both introduce yourselves and give us your business address.
Sure. My name is Tom Whitlock, president of Damon Farber, oh, sorry, just gave that to me. My name is Tom Whitlock, president of Damon Farber Associates. Our address is four oh one Second Avenue North in Minneapolis, Suite 410.
And I'm Bob Close. My company is Bob Close Studio, and my office is located at seven oh five Raymond Avenue in St. Paul.
Thank you.
So, to advance, basically, the slide you're seeing in front of you right now is what Scott has been talking about, step one being preliminary. Scott has been talking about. Step one being preliminary approval, to be able to get the land uses identified, densities, building heights, those kinds of issues that he just went through. And then at the level of detail that you will see when we move into final approval and step two, that's when you'll be seeing all of the, everything fleshed out essentially. Setbacks, road dimensions, all those kinds of things will be happening in that second phase. So we just wanted to take you back a little bit. I, I'd done a little bit of research on my own thinking about innovation in development in Edina, and it took me back to Southdale in the mid-fifties and what an innovative concept it was to have an indoor mall. It was the first one in the country. And it was surrounded by parking, but in my reading, I learned that it was supposed to be a completely built-out village with housing, medical facilities, a lake, parks. Suddenly, suddenly that paints a very different picture about what Southdale could have been. But it was driven by the fact that we were in a very auto-centric culture. Cars were finding their way in the mid-fifties, as we all know, and that continued into the sixties when Pentagon Park was built. And when you look at Pentagon Park and you examine it as, as the organism that it is, very much designed around accessibility through with a car, very difficult to get there historically from any other means. And, and what you see there today is a reflection of, of that, the decisions that were made based on an auto-centric culture. And when you look at the slide in front of you, you can see how that translates after all these years into an environment that is pretty much devoid of green. It's, it's just remarkable to look at Fred Richards adjacent to this space and literally see that one is almost entirely gray and one is entirely green and blue with water in there. And you start to understand that these two systems here abut one another and are literally isolated with a fence from one another. So it reflects again how we thought about land uses and, and different kinds of things working together historically in the fifties and sixties. So you can see clearly from this picture the impact that that has. When you get down on the ground in the site, you see the buildings that are, as Scott said, are really in bad shape, other than the ones that he's renovated. You can see the quality of the environment on the ground, which again, the color gray is the one that essentially dominates the picture here. And we're thinking very differently about what the potentials are for this place. So the diagram on the right showing the existing, down the middle there, existing relationship, that totally bifurcated land uses. And our goal is really one of bringing the green into any redevelopment that occurs, bringing it through all the way to Seventy-seventh, starting to integrate the systems as, if, in any way that we can so that there are synergies that are built in terms of stormwater management. And this doesn't mean taking water from Pentagon Park and putting it all into Frederick, it's to the north. But it has to do with doing integrated systems that, again, as Scott said, become recreational opportunities, they become visual amenities, gathering places, and so on. So we start to break down that heavy green line you see in the left picture, and it becomes more of the goal that you see on the right. So as you have seen earlier, this led us to a series of principles that are guiding our thinking, and we are continuing to think about this and develop these ideas. Again, speaking about innovation in Edina, you get the qualities of Fiftieth and France, which is a model that is held up by many, many urbanists about scale of streets and how to handle parking and, you know, being creative about creating an urban space. Then you look at Centennial Lakes, which took stormwater and made it a huge amenity in the middle, that skated on in the winter. And you start to see the progression of thinking from the innovation of the fifties and the sixties to the innovation of the eighties. And we'd like to see that innovative kind of progression continue here. So this notion of rebuilding green streets that are true streets that allow you to park on them, that become reservoirs for parking that are not surface parking lots, which is what is out there to the max today, as you know. This notion of integrated stormwater that I just mentioned so that we have the opportunity to begin to make a more integrated and cohesive kind of place where we're not just pouring water into a, into a basin somewhere, but we're actually thinking about how water is captured and reused and, and so forth. Seventy-seventh, we identified right away as a very critical part of this because we think that some of the front doors to Fred Richards' property as well as to Pentagon Park will come along from Seventy-seventh through those green streets up into this development. So Seventy-seventh itself, we would like to see upgraded to be able to promote transit use. So we get shelters out there. We get comfortable pedestrian environments on both sides of the street. As you know, right now, all there is is a four-foot sidewalk on the south side. So it's really a matter of trying to, trying to work with the private property owners. We, on the north side, we don't worry about that. But work with Seagate and others on the south side to be able to create a, a really good pedestrian environment and a transit-friendly environment. The connection west to east, this has to do with the, the tower site as, as we're referring to it, and how it can connect not only with bicycle and pedestrian, but water to the north site. So it starts to bring those two sites together in a really meaningful way. It helps us solve some of the water issues we want to solve, but it also creates amenity. Multimodality is something that I know your complete streets program is all about that. And it's something that we totally believe in. And of course, the regional trail becomes a key part of that. And shared parking strategies, we talked about that when we were with you before. This is an idea that parking can be carefully sited and can serve Fred Richards' as well as the Pentagon Development. So these are the basic principles that we're continuing to explore and develop.
Thanks, Bob. So how do we apply these principles to the site? So one of the things that the team has been working on and Scott mentioned is what kind of infrastructure is needed to support development. And so we have two options before you tonight. One that shows if we were to redevelop the property consistently within the property lines and not providing any synergy between the Fred Richards site and ours, and a scenario that shows sort of the maximum amount of infrastructure that might be needed if there's a more integrated approach that, that we proceed with. So this diagram shows, which is option one, shows development within the existing property line. So, and some of the infrastructure that's needed, and that's consistent with the guidelines that Bob just talked about in both scenarios. Seventy-seventh, Seventy-seventh right now is a five-lane roadway, center turn lane, as Bob mentioned, a sidewalk just on the south side, four feet wide. So what the project envisions in either scenario is that Seventy-seventh becomes a much more pedestrian-friendly street with sidewalks on both sides, transit stops. There's, it's well-served by transit today, but the pedestrian connectivity to the transit is, is difficult. So making it much more pedestrian-friendly and then adding a center green boulevard down the middle of Seventy-seventh where there's a two-way left-hand turn lane. Today, still allowing access both on the north and south sides, but making it much more of a green and pedestrian-friendly street. Parking ramps, you see in orange, we envision not large masses of surface parking as a part of the redevelopment, but putting parking, an integrated approach with parking structures, parking on some of the green streets, parking along the Parkway, along Fred Richards', which would allow improved public access to that green space. And so that just shows some of the additional infrastructure that's needed to support that kind of development and, and the uses around it. As far as green streets, which Bob mentioned, which is, was another one of the goals, the green along here, north of Seventy-seventh, again, more pedestrian-friendly streets unlocking access to the site, unlocking access to the green space to the north, parking on the street, sidewalks, decorative lighting, street trees, again, trying to improve the pedestrian connectivity and feel of the overall development. The pink, which is Parkway along the south side of the Fred Richards site, again, a, a green street allowing parking on both sides of the street in parking bays, decorative lighting, street trees, public access. You'll see in the orange is the proposed regional trail by Three Rivers Park District. So that would allow access to trail users to the site. If this is office, it's a, an additional amenity, which gets people to the site. But it also allows people from the development to access the regional trail and access the other amenities within the city. And then certainly the densities that we're talking about, which Carrie and Scott already alluded to, the hotel site, and I'll get into the heights in a little, in a second here, but along Highway one hundred, taking advantage of the access and views from Highway one hundred, and then two office complexes, roughly, roughly about nine hundred thousand gross square feet on that tower site of office. Additional, this is a little different than the diagram that Carrie showed you earlier. We are showing development on the Walsh Title site, roughly a two-story or twenty thousand square, or fifteen thousand square foot use in that area.
In that area where Walsh Title is currently shown, you don't show any parking. So it, is that, is that just a, an omission? Or is that, are you assuming that parking, they would park elsewhere?
No, that, that would need to be served by parking. This diagram is trying to show what's TIF-eligible. So with a use that small, it would most likely be surface parking, which is not eligible, which is my understanding, just the parking ramps. So there would be parking that would serve that site. So that's the scenario of public infrastructure needed to support development within the existing property. Now, the next option shows what if there's a, a new use at Fred Richards' and more access is needed to that site and a more integrated approach. Again, showing all the development within the existing property of Pentagon Park. But this scenario shows, again, Seventy-seventh Street improved, like the last scenario with sidewalks and the green boulevard. But it shows a underpass or bridge at this location, which would allow water and access to the regional trail system to slide underneath Seventy-seventh and gain access to the tower site. So you can imagine if you're a hotel user and you can rent a bike, you could just have access directly out onto the regional trail system and, and connected to a wide variety of amenities, much like Centennial Lakes and the bridges that go over the water there. So that's one of the different, differentiating features of this concept from the previous. The Parkway, again, shows along the Fred Richards' property, but this scenario shows connecting over to Seventy-seventh and the tower site. Improving access, improved sort of gateway into the development and access for the community to that green space. You can envision it much like a Minneapolis Parkway system where people can access this Parkway, they can park on either side, access the green space, very convenient. Again, not showing a connection over to Seventy-sixth, but just over to this green street and back out to Seventy-seventh. So the only traffic that would be along this road is associated with the green space or the development, not any through traffic. Otherwise, the, this scenario is consistent with the previous as far as the parking ramps, the stormwater improvements, and other public infrastructure. So this is a diagram that, again, Carrie had showed you earlier, showing potential building heights that we're looking to get your approval on and comment on tonight. Along the north parcel, north of Seventy-seventh, we're showing four-story development along the park. And then to the south, along Seventy-seventh, we're looking at five stories, which is more of the maroon color. Again, trying to step things down towards the park and the neighborhood in scale. The Walsh Title site assumes a two-story level of development in that location, which is the yellow or the gold. And then, as Scott mentioned earlier, along the office site or the tower site, the, the office uses in this location would not exceed twelve stories as a maximum. And then the hotel site leaves it open to be twelve-plus stories. And again, we would come, once there's a definitive user of that, we would come back for your So I think with that, we'd open it up to any questions that you might have.
Would you just go back, either option one or two, and talk a little bit about how you would accomplish your goals on stormwater management as an amenity?
Certainly.
Mr. Whitlock?
I'll start, and Bob, you can, you can jump in. It's important to know that currently the Pentagon site, surface drains both to the north, to the, the Fred Richards' site and to the south directly on to Seventy-seventh. There's no stormwater pipes that convey it to the system. It's all surface-drained. Just the northeast section here actually already does drain into the existing stormwater ponds at Fred Richards'. So as an amenity, we're showing, and this is very diagrammatic at this point, and you, and I know in our previous meetings, we've shown some images of what that might look like, but that, that stormwater can be used as amenity for the uses on the site, whether it's a, a large, open water body that people can sit and have lunch next to, and Scott talked about this a little bit, whether it's integrating stormwater along the street into bioswales. I think we're looking at an integrated approach for stormwater, that it's just not one solution.
We've been studying precedents really around the world, and there are any number of them that are pretty amazing in terms of what, what they are doing in terms of managing water, thinking of water as a resource. And somebody, it might have been somebody here in the council or at the planning commission, said at some point, why would you want to give any water away from your site? And I think that's, that's a pretty interesting comment because it is a precious resource, and it is one that we would want to use very, very carefully. We'd like to recycle it. We'd like to celebrate it in, with recreational kinds of uses. And what you see in the diagram here is, is very schematic. It shows a, a blue dot in the middle of each block. But we really do believe that this entire thing could be connected east to west and then actually to the north to what you see as the reconfigured water system that could occur in this particular scheme on Fred Richards'. So we see it. It's something that can be managed. It can be controlled. The technology is available. We just feel it's very important to, to do it with the water as well as, as Scott was saying about the potential for harvesting energy, solar, that sort of thing. I hope that answers.
Yeah, it, it helps. I just was wondering, you know, basically when you look at option one, I don't know if those existing ponds are, or if those ponds that are shown on option one are existing ponds on Fred Richards', or whether you proposed adding something to that or you, or you...
Yeah, they, they are existing ponds as shown in option one.
It looked like a little bit different configuration than what we have on our kind of official city map. That's why I asked. And of course, you've got the pond over south of Seventy-seventh, too. And then on option two, you've got essentially a stream, I imagine, not nearly as wide as what we see at Centennial Lakes, but the notion that there's some continuing ribbon of water.
Correct.
That, that, that moves from south of Seventy-seventh, under, under the bridge and then moves along through that area that would be at the south end of existing Fred Richards'.
And we've used Minnehaha Creek as a kind of a parallel. It's, it's a thinner body of water. It, it makes it for a narrower seam between the two, but it becomes, it becomes a seam that holds the north and south sides together. And so the regional trail could interact with that. The Parkway could interact with that. And it, it becomes a feature for really both sides and people moving through.
Thank you. Members break.
One, one option that I thought was interesting was the, a hybrid option of these, the two infrastructure plans, where you have the Parkway along that edge of commercial, along your site. But then if the, the Fred were to change to a different public use, then you could be more creative with the trail alignment and, and the green space around it and the, and the, and the shape of the water, and then have a green space in between that parking street, that green street and the, the trail alignment. So I thought that was, that was another interesting option. That would also do more, I think, to discourage the type of cut-through traffic you don't want to get. want to get, you want to get destination traffic, and you want that street to be really calm, like you'd find at the landings at St. Paul.
Yes.
That is one iteration of this. I'm gonna switch over to use and height. On, on the height issue, I, I see 12-plus in that light blue rectangle on the, on the, so on one of the last, there it is, 12-plus. I, myself, I don't, I, in terms of a preliminary PUD, I, myself, would not be comfortable going above that comp plan limit, and that's not to say that something might change between preliminary and final with, when you have a, someone in hand. But I, I can't see going on a preliminary basis with, with a 12-plus designation. 12, that was in, that was in the last, that's in the comp plan, it was in the last site plan. And I also think part of height, that there's two components of height that are in our PUD, that are mentioned in, in the PUD, that, that should be part of this final, final plan at some point. One is a step-down, not creating this massive wall of structures. And as you have it sketched out on 77th, you have that step-down to that Parkway feature from south to north, from five stories to four. On the, on the, on the southern side, I could also see that step-down occurring. It's kind of a step-down to the neighborhood to the north. So, maybe it's a, maybe it's a 12 in front, and then something lower as you step down towards the neighborhood. The other, the other element is podium height, and it's something that is, has been in our comp plan, and we've, we've, we sometimes lead, lead the charge on in discussions, but it's not always leveraged. And I think if you want to create this pedestrian environment and this great vibrancy to the district, you should integrate podium height into this entire project, especially on the north side, where you're at four and five stories, and how will that feel to somebody on the ground walking down this narrow street? And then also, when we met in our, in our groups with Member Bennett, we talked about street width. You had 12s on a lot of your diagrams. We don't, we think 11 is, is suitable, and, and lower on the side streets. And what you can get out of that is you get more buffer for your boulevard, and you get bigger sidewalks. And that's a trend that we've been focusing on as, as a council. And I think that will lead to a better project as well, and be part of that trade, as you get more flexibility in PUD, and we're getting a better project that exceeds our standards on those features.
Thank you. Member Brendel, your, your comments, please?
There's, there's a long way for this to go, and the comments will be, I think, easier when, when there's a more specific design to react to. But some of what I'm gonna say is very similar to what you just heard. We do like buildings closer to the street, encouraging a more direct connection between the person on the sidewalk and the building. That said, what, you know, the, the tall building and the person on the street, that's, that's where we look at, if we're at a 35-foot setback, for example, we might be looking at a story, maybe two stories, at that location, and then stepping back, maybe having some terraces and whatever on those other stories that are, that are higher, makes for, makes for a building that, that has more interest in its height, but it also doesn't tower over the person who's on the sidewalk. So, the condominiums at 50th and France are, are an example of that. I mean, they are the way they are because that's what was requested and compromised on in a very similar discussion. We want that building as close, as close to the pedestrian as we can get it comfortably, and we also don't want it to tower over that corner. This is, as you say, a more car-centric area, but still, you are gonna have that user. Hopefully, you are going to succeed in encouraging multimodal transportation, having the bike rental there, the, the, the trail being amenity that draws people to want to have their business here, want to have the hotel there, ultimately possibly want to have more residential here, and, and if, and, and a restaurant, that's a big one for me. We, we have our meeting on Friday, we're gonna talk about that. But, but I, I would like to see a plan for some nightlife, so it doesn't shut down at 5:00. It doesn't, and it's not dark at 5:00. I, it's a beautiful area, it's gonna become, through your generosity and your skill, it's gonna become more beautiful, and how it embraces the park, I, I think it's, it's only gonna benefit us as a city. But as far as height, whether it's the buildings along 77th, or, or where, where we're talking about more height in that south area, I think looking at, looking at some podium height, some terracing, some different materials would, would go a long way to softening the, the look and feel.
Great comments, thank you.
Thank you. Member Ben.
I did walk outside yesterday for an hour because I live three blocks from Excelsior on Grand, and it was really difficult to get there, literally breathtaking. But once I was there, it was beautiful, and it was sheltered. And the paths in that park go so many different places and different sightlines that I could just do what I normally don't do, instead of point-to-point, and just kind of amble within the park itself. And so, that, I think, is, has just been a huge success in revitalizing the area itself, but also serving as an amenity for the surrounding single-family home neighborhoods. Really, really a success. And I know that they've had some challenges with some of the retail tenants. So, the public part of it, to me, is the most notable, the transformation that took place there. And I know that that's more in the public realm than in the private realm, but I do see and appreciate the opportunities for partnership and what they can produce. And that's, I think, the part of this vision or design that I appreciate the most. I also was fortunate to go out to the National League of Cities Congress, and both in Bellevue and in Seattle, heard people commenting on what has worked and what hasn't worked with development and redevelopment. In Bellevue, in their downtown area, they, one of the lessons that they're taking forward is there wasn't enough porousness. It isn't that they needed to bring automobiles through superblocks, they just needed to be able to have people feel welcome to move on foot or on bicycle, and that's something that they're going to be trying to do better going forward. I see that, again, as something that you are paying attention to here. Certainly, it was something that was accomplished with Excelsior on Grand, and it's something that I think benefits the entire community, and is that partnership, that private-public partnership. That being said, agree with some of the other things that have been said as well. It's always easier to react in terms of moving toward approval to something that has a definition. And I don't know that we have rezoned something PUD without a proposal on the table. I was going to ask Director Teague that.
At the preliminary stage of any PUD that we've done, we've had really, really detailed plans.
Sure. And I think that in terms of things like parking, co, flexibility with code requirements, the assurance with that process has been to say, well, there won't be a problem with parking going forward because PUD says this is the only thing that this can be. And if it's not going to be this, then it has to go through a new PUD process, and then you get to reconsider things like parking. So, I'm not saying go away and come back when you have complete designs for each of the part, but I am saying that there's a comfort level with specificity, assurance that public needs can be met in different ways. And we're being asked to take kind of a leap of faith here, that is, has some fear factor to it. I was on the council when we approved the comp plan and some of the heights. I mean, I know that we differentiated south of 76th. I think context is really, really important. I see that focus in your work. But being on the south edge of space that has been public forever, or a long, long time, I think you're...
I think since the 80s, it's been public.
Your offering of lower height in that area is, I think, welcome. I agree that step-downs and podium height will help, especially since you have so much hope for West 77th Street. Even five stories or four stories next to a shoulder can feel high. So, I trust that you're going to work with that height as the, the designs get fleshed out. With respect to the hotel or tower area, I look forward to seeing more specificity down the road. I appreciate what you're saying, and I know that we contemplated height there before. It's interesting, because when you look at the aerial shots, there's actually less width. It's next to a freeway on the west, but north-south, there's closer proximity to that neighborhood to the north. And I'd like to see that context considered and some shadow studies done that can give us some assurance in making final approval decisions. I support the narrower street widths and using the, you know, going with what the legal minimum is. We want automobiles to move safely, but we also, that green space would be really welcome, wider sidewalks, better pedestrian environment, more room for trees to mature, that kind of thing, all appreciated. Think you've identified great elements, and you're definitely moving in the right direction. I know that you're looking now for some certainty, and also heard the Planning Commission say, yes, it would be easier to give you that reaction with a more specific design. So, would welcome a very well-crafted PUD. If we're going to step off in this new direction, I think we need to be careful what the wording is, and what, what is offered and what is limited. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
When Scott talked about, you know, looking at the site and the specialness of it, and the more green space, including ponding, and the stormwater management as amenity, and upgrading the transit center, and upgrading 77th Street, and potential solar through a program like the PACE program, those are part of the things we have to hear when we think about PUD. Because for us, when we crafted being able to do PUDs, the concept was that it gave the developer flexibility, but it gave the city things they were looking for. So, that, that meshing of the two is really important, just like that picture you have of the land with the line in between, and if we could mesh it better, it, that would be better for us. So, looking at PUDs from a city and a developer point of view has to be that more integrated thing. So, I appreciated Scott, you leading off with that. We did a pretty thorough job on that, the height of that south section with the neighborhood when we went through that first study, and we had public hearings, and so, I feel like I made a commitment to the neighbors that this is a 12-story area in this south area, and, you know, that without a really good reason to change that, that's my comfort level. When I look at your two plans, I'm kind of like, Member Sprague, I'd like to take the west section of Plan Option Number Two, and potentially connect it to the east section of Option Number One for now, because we really don't know what, what's in store for the Fred in the future. But I think that concept of trying to connect that south area where you potentially have a hotel with the ability to take a bike and go for a bike ride, I think that makes a ton of sense, and it certainly does if I were a hotel developer and thinking about future amenities for that, or a large corporate office that maybe wanted to build on one of the other two towers, you know, how does it connect? And that connection, to me, is really important. So, if Walsh Title is built like it's shown in Option One, it looks like a barrier to me, and that doesn't give me any comfort at all. I'd like to be able to know that, that you and we as a city have reserved the ability to connect that in a better way, whether it's, and maybe it's the street going there, I have a comfort level with that, along with the ability to walk and bike. I do like the recommendation in this one right there of the yellow and orange and the difference in height. I think you're recognizing that people do look across the Fred, whether it's a golf course or a park, at those buildings, and what they see is important to them. But the other part of this is, to me, is what those buildings get to see looking north is also important as a owner and a, and a leasor, as to what they're looking at. We know bar engineering already didn't want to leave that site because they liked what they could look at. So, I like the recognition that, that allows you some ability to do that. I understand that this is a ways off, especially on that north piece, and that the south piece looks like it will move first, and I'm okay with that. I think that gives us time to discuss kind of what that connection with the Fred is, but I would ask you not to necessarily cut that off by building on Walsh the way it's shown in, in Number One, Option One. That Option Two gives all of us a chance to do the best job we can for that area, because we know there's going to be a bike trail along there, and I want to be able to have a connection to it for everything on the south side of 77th Street. Uses, you know, we haven't really talked, I know that we're all still married to the ability to potentially have housing there someday. You've agreed not to take that off the table. I think we appreciate that. You know, it's not gonna be what it was designed to be years ago, but the market changed and the ownership changed, and I get that. I don't own it, I can't tell you what you have to do on it. But I appreciate that you haven't completely cut that off. Mayor?
Thank you. Some terrific comments, I think, by our council members for you, I'm sure, both in your individual meetings and here this evening as well. And there'll be some redundancy in what you hear from me. One of the, one of the things I thought was quite interesting, and it's because we've looked at quite a few projects now where we've implemented PUD, and it's been on a project-by-project basis, so it's a little bit easier than, than dealing with a, a piece of property that's a 43-acre, 40-plus acre tract that's gonna be developed incrementally. And I will tell you that I'm comfortable with, personally, with a preliminary zoning of, of PUD, or rezoning to PUD, because of the flexibility that folks have mentioned, and that the Planning Commission, too, that it provides both to you and to us. And so, the point I was gonna make was that oftentimes, we see Planning Commission notes or, or meetings on tape where PUD's been used on a project, and the, the Planning Commission in particular is sitting there discussing amongst themselves, well, what's, basically, what's in this for the city? I mean, you're getting flexibility, Mr. Developer, or Madam Developer, but where are you bringing something back to us from a, from a PUD standpoint that we can grasp a hold of and, and call our, our own? This is, this is the trade-off. This is why we've agreed to rezone using PUD and achieve some flexibility for you. But in this particular circumstance, you have gone the extra mile, and no one on the Planning Commission mentioned, hey, wait a minute, what's in it for the city here if we go with a PUD? Because as Member Swenson said, you've committed to a higher level of green space, and that's, that's a remarkable photograph, as you look from north to south, across the houses, across the golf course, and all of a sudden, you hit this wall of gray, and it's all concrete all the way to 494. There isn't, you, you can't, there's one little patch of green, I think, in Seagate, that looks like a well-manicured little piece of ground that they're taking great pride in, because it's the only piece of green space for blocks, you know? So, you, you're promising to give us more green space. You, you've started to think about how you want to use stormwater, how we're gonna be You've started to think about how you want to use storm water, how we're going to be able to recycle this and use it over and over and over again as a resource. And whether it's Option One or Option Two, and, you know, regardless of the future of the Fred, this is something that you're giving thought to, and I think it's terrific. You have ignited our imaginations as well with the work that you have done, and made us realize what this could be over there, that it could be something akin to a mix of Centennial Lakes and Fiftieth and France. One of the beauties of Fiftieth and France, Member Brindle pointed it out, is that you've got these nice wide paver sidewalks right up next to buildings that you never feel overpowered by because of the use of podium height, as several of the council members have mentioned. And it's really critical. I think we could have probably gone to six stories at Fiftieth and France instead of four.
Oh, don't tell him that. He's already sold off.
Yeah, using podium height because of the sort of embracing nature of the street scape, the wide sidewalk, paper sidewalk, next to the vibrant retail fronts. So that's another cautionary element here. I think office, it's had a historic office use since the mid-sixties, was state-of-the-art for its time. And now it's, we've got a developer who has taken a chance and purchased the property, seen its potential because of this, of the fact that he's been in this business, this family business, for a couple of generations now. And then he's recruited this really terrific team to help him vision what could be there. And you've helped us see a better vision for what could happen down there in that predominantly commercial neighborhood. But make sure you keep some vibrancy on the street when you go through this process. And I think Member Brindle mentioned that as well. Other things that you've done that make us feel more comfortable, I think generally, Member Swenson mentioned it, your commitment to a non-motorized life down there, the commitment to making sure that buildings have been set up in a way where people that come there can put their bikes inside, they can take a shower and go to work. The upgraded walking amenities, the commitment to signature transit stops, these things that Member Swenson alluded to before, I just sort of reinforce as things that I see that you're saying to us, if we go up to the PUD route, this is, these are the kinds of things that we think we can do that make this a better development and a better city in which to live. And that's important to all of us, because we're really in this development business together. This is another eighty-year project that we all need to take pride in. And you are moving in the right direction. So from a land use standpoint, as Member Swenson said, you've maintained some flexibility there with respect to residential. I understand the desire for predominant office use at the present time makes sense, that's its historic use. It was state-of-the-art at one time, it can be state-of-the-art Class A space again. The densities I'm comfortable with. I may be the guy that's the most, person that's the most comfortable with height on that west edge along Highway 100. Depending upon what you come up with in terms of a potential use there for a hotel, depending on its architecture, depending on its clientele, depending upon how the area around it is developed, I could have some flexibility above 12 stories, but that's the only place I would have that mental flexibility right now, I would tell you. And so I like, we like, I think we all like what we're seeing, both at the planning commission level and the council level so far. We understand this is going to go in phases. We're going to have final say here, regardless of whether we preliminarily approve it for PUD. But I think that gives us the best flexibility on a staged development over time, is to be able to say, no, you got to do this, or we're going to do this, how do you think about that? And this, to me, is the best tool to use here, even if we're going to do something that's unique to what we've done so far, and that's potentially use PUD on a preliminary basis to support the development of forty-plus acres over time. And I think that's the best tool, when you think about the tools that we could use. To me, that's the best tool we could both use to make sure that we both get what we need out of this, and that the city of Edina gets what they need out of it in terms of a greatly enhanced development over time. So those are my thoughts. Hope that helps. Any other questions for council members?
I had a couple of comments to the comments. First of all, thank you. Very insightful, very helpful. I think there's sixteen-plus months of thought coming back from you on this as well, so thank you. It makes a huge difference. I think that 2014 is the year of planning, the year of action, truly should be 2015. There was a comment, I believe, that Councilperson Swenson made about not losing the opportunity at the Walsh Title site. That's, we're on the same page. Integrating that site with the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail, trying to figure out what its best use is, trying to think about if the Fred Richards decision at some point by the community is that it remains golf, we have ideas and options of what to do if it's not golf, if it's a different public use. There's ways to open that site up, integrate it, to work really nicely either way with the Nine Mile Regional Creek Trail. This can be a place that people can get off their bike, can get something to eat, can sit, can relax. It's a place where you can have a restaurant that's got a little bit of a hometown feel, but it's nice, not necessarily a chain. So those are the types of things we're thinking about that. We don't have a lot of specificity right now on, again, what's the architecture, what's the exact retailer, what's this corner going to look like? And candidly, that's why we will, we would be back in your midst a number of times, doing exactly what we've been doing, which is intake, which is having discussions and candidly not waiting to talk about updating when we've got a project that's ready to go, but working with staff and working with you along the way. Because that's candidly what's gotten us all to this point, is by working collaboratively. And this is a multiple-phase, multiple-year project if it's going to go forward. It took twenty-five-plus years to make a rack out of it, it's going to take a number of years to make it successful. But we are on the edge of that. I think the setback comments are very, very good. I think that the setbacks, I think the question of how do we step the buildings, what do we do with podiums, are all going to need to be very specifically looked at as we get into sketch plan with specific items on specific sites, because candidly, we just, we flat-out don't know. It's a comment, just like a number of other comments, that needs to be integrated and brought forward, and we need to be able to consider that together as we go along. There's just, I wish I could promise it any more than I could promise what a hotel user could be or what the specific office group could be, but we just don't know yet because it's just not clear. Councilperson Sprague, you framed the initial comment about height in regard to the hotel. And again, to be clear, we're not here, I'm not here asking that it is taller than 12. I'm simply saying, I don't think it's right. It's disingenuous for me to come here and say, we only want 12 stories for that one little portion, and we'll never come back and ask for it again. If it's something that's commensurate, if we, if there's a use and a user that has the kind of architecture, the kind of use, the kind of approach that you think is appropriate, that you want to consider changing the comp plan, we would come before you, you'd have that decision. We ask for nothing more, just consideration, just simply a process to go over things. And it would be inappropriate if we were to say we need X stories above 12, because we don't know. That's why we're not going to ask for that, not only tonight, but before the end of March. We don't know. There could come a day when we do have that question, and we simply want to just say we'd like the door to be able to be open to consideration, nothing more. No other expectation is expected on that.
What did you think about the comments of Member Sprague and Member Swenson with regard to creating the hybrid so that there's, regardless of how things go forward, there's connectivity between the north and south sides of the project? That was an important comment, I thought.
Yes, and that actually is my final, my final response to the comments is, the ability to integrate, and I wrote this out very quickly, but the ability to integrate Pentagon's 42 acres potentially with Richards' 40-plus acres, if the city elects to change its public use from golf to a different public use, is simply critical. It's an unbelievable opportunity, it's an irresistible opportunity, I think, for the city as well as for us if that's what would be decided. We had to come forward with two different plans, with two different ideas. If we go back to the map, either to either diagram, if we can go back on the PowerPoint, I'm sorry. And if we look at either of the two, if you look at where the water is at, if you look at where the building footprints are, if you think about where the roads are, it's very preliminary. It's, I think Tom used the term of diagrammatic. And how these integrate and what they can be, and are there three green streets that run north and south on the north end of the property? We don't know, there could be two, depending upon what's developed. So minds are open, options are open. We felt what we needed to give you was a kind of a total maximum mass, a maximum mass of density, you know, what the uses could be, height with the exception of, we leave open the potential of coming back if something is really warranted for you to consider on the hotel site. We felt we needed to give you, I guess, a box, a boundary of what that could be. What happens inside the box? What the water looks like? Is it Minnehaha Creek? Is it a little bit wider? Is it the chain of lakes? Is it a different integration? That's the fun part, that's the specific part. And that's what we look forward to figuring out as we go along, as we get this into a position where we can not only attract but secure the right users to put this all into action, because the marketplace has dramatically changed. These bigger users are just not able to wait the amount of time that they were back in the eighties and the nineties. Life is different. And you know what? Five years from now, it'll be different as well. But I think we have the possibilities to take a look and change, whether you look at diagram one or diagram two, there can be integration, there can be all kinds of flexibilities. It has to work, it has to balance, but there's tremendous flexibility in this. There really is. So I hope that answers, does that answer your question?
It helps. Other questions for council members or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, the team. I see our environmental consultant in the audience there, from Greenstep Cities. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, Mayor.
Mr. Nelson, any New Year's comments of any kind?
Happy New Year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Roundhorse, the same, I take it? All right, and you as well. All right, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the Correspondence and Petitions section, and I take it we have everything on the dais that's been sent to the council. And then, do we have any aviation noise update this evening, either from Manager Neil or Member Bennett?
I do not have an update.
Member Bennett has something.
I have a quick update. That is, the next meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee will take place on Wednesday, the 15th of January, at the MAC offices on 28th Street, south of Highway 62. There has been a change in the agenda for that meeting. Tentatively, a presentation by the FAA had been scheduled, an update on the discussion about ARNAV, the navigational technique, and that has been postponed. And instead, there will be a discussion, an update on, it's titled, Review Runway 12L Departure Turns Before Runway End. And those materials are available online, people can view the brief report. Again, 1:30 PM on Wednesday, January 3rd, and I will, any other change in the agenda I'll bring forward at the council meeting to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mayor and council comments, I think it's been a while since we've been together. I think it might be Member Brindle, starting out this evening, or we could actually mix it up and start with Member Swenson. Member Brindle?
All right. Okay. First thing, I have something for you, Mayor, and that is stationary descriptions along the southwest corridor line that was handed out at the meeting in December.
Thanks for attending, ma'am.
Yep, you're welcome. It's getting interesting, as you well know. The general consensus is that it will happen, it just needs to keep ramming its way through. I do have a few things. Monday morning, yesterday morning, I attended a special meeting of the I-494 Commission, Corridor Commission with regard to project priorities. And the legislative consultants for us with Messerly and Kramer are John Appitz and Aaron Campbell, who we were with earlier. And there is a series of projects, and we really didn't put them in priority order, but we just looked at each project and wanted to make sure that, that we said, all right, this is of the best interest to these cities, or these cities, or these cities that are part of the Corridor Commission. The Crosstown-France Avenue Interchange is one of the projects. The 169 Valley View Interchange is one of the projects. And those two would specifically both impact Edina, but they would also impact Eden Prairie and Minnetonka, both of them would. And particularly with the changes with, at United Healthcare at Crosstown and Shady Oak Let's see here, going down this list, Southwest Twin Cities Beyond the Yellow Ribbon will hold its next meeting on Thursday, January 16th. Beginning in 2014, we're going to start inviting speakers to come and invite the public and get more public awareness that this group exists, that the support and resource is there for people to call and people to contact when they need something. So the speaker this month is ESGR Employer Support for Garden Reserve. So it's to let military persons know that there is employer support, there's support for them if they need support within their place of work. And it's also support for employers, so they have some support and understanding of maybe some issues with some employees who have military experience, that if the employer or immediate supervisor doesn't have military experience, there's some support for them, so they have a better understanding of how to get along if, in fact, there are some challenges there. So it's, ESGR is part of the Department of Defense, and it started in 1972, and the, it's a busy office, they do a lot of work here. So the intent is to let people know they're there, and also to let people know that this Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Coalition is here. The official newspaper, this is something Manager Neil and I have been batting around and playing baseball with a little bit, with the increased number of multiple dwellings. I'm increasingly concerned with making sure that people live, who live in multiple dwellings, have access to the Edina Sun Current being our official newspaper. And some of the people who will be living in these apartments already live in Edina. They're going to sell their houses, they're going to stay in Edina, and this is where they're going to live. And when they move in there, they're no longer going to receive the Edina Sun Current as they have been in their single-family home. So I think we need to look forward to that and see what we can do. In my communication with Manager Neil, it seems that it's more an issue with building owners, building managers, than it is with the newspaper. So I think maybe we need to look at working with developers and building owners and let them know that it's important to us that this resource is available to the residents, because it's how our information gets out. It's how these people are going to know that we're looking for people to apply to work on boards and commissions. And I think we're missing out on some talent, and we're missing out on an opportunity to let people know what's going on. February 8th, I will attend the Joint Community Forces Regional Meeting at Normandale College. This is a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon project. There was, there were summits, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon summits, all over the state. There was, there were summits, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon summits, all over the state. And it was basically to get us trained on what we were going to do and get us ready. And so this is a follow-on to that. And it's to help us all collaborate and synchronize our resources for the benefit of being able to refer military families to the best resources that fit their concerns. So that's what I got.
Thank you.
Yep.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. I think there, following on Member Brindle's comments, I think there is a lot of support for the Southwest Light Rail in the community, and it's encouraging to hear that it is moving forward. I think there are folks in this community and others who are concerned about whatever decision is made about the location of freight rail. And for those people, there are two events. One took place this evening, a second is scheduled on January ninth, this coming Thursday, from five to seven thirty PM in the St. Louis Park Recreation Center, which is at thirty-seven-hundred Monterey Drive in St. Louis Park. It's very near the St. Louis Park Target and south of Beltline Boulevard. Again, from five to seven thirty PM. And that will be an open house with information on rail water quality impacts and the accelerated landscaping and greenscaping that is also being looked at. Other than that, just resumption of meetings, including Community Education Services Board, the Noise Oversight Committee, and I did, I was honored to attend the swearing-in of Minneapolis Mayor Betsy Hodges last week and her children's inaugural. And I look forward to this body continuing to work with our colleagues in surrounding communities, including Minneapolis.
And Happy New Year to everybody.
And the same to you. Member Swenson.
I have one thing to pass on to Manager Neil and ask that I can, we can get a report back, but we did get a letter, which I'll give you, Scott, about an issue on upper terrace, and I just would like something on that at a later date. And then I will give the rest of my time to Director Benner, who had something to say about communication, but the mayor was looking down, so he didn't see her finger raised in the air, but I did, so.
Thank you, Member Swenson. I just wanted to follow up on Member Brindle's comments about the sun currents circulation here in Edina. We've been working truly for years with the sun current on circulation issues, and while we continue to work through those issues, we do have one new thing available to residents. Each week, they do drop off approximately seventy-five copies of papers that they can pick up here at the front desk of City Hall, free of charge, without having to pay the seventy-five cent newsstand price at the area distribution sites. So if there are residents out there who are looking for papers, they can come here to get a copy. We will continue to work to get the home distribution, because of course, that's more convenient. But I do want to get out word that those copies are available here.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Members, break.
Winter break is over, extended by two days. My children need to go back to school. That's all I have to say this evening.
My report is equally brief. I think one item to cover. I've been asked by the Move Minnesota group to serve as co-chair for a kitchen cabinet for Move Minnesota relative to local elected officials statewide. So they're having the first meeting sometime in the middle of January. I told them I would do it, I'd be happy to help out. And so I'll keep you posted on that as well. So Manager Neil. And I hope everybody had a great holiday. It was really a wonderful season, I thought. Anyway.
As you might know, it's sort of a skill I have to predict the length of council meetings. I don't know if you knew that. But I'd like Councilmember Brindle to note the name, the number on that. It says nine oh five.
Nine oh five PM.
No, we haven't had the HRA.
No, and I'm going to skunk that prediction with a number of updates for you, so.
It is very close.
Yes, very close. I've got a couple of things to tell you tonight. First of all, we have a new fire chief. We announced earlier today that Tom Schmitz is rejoining the team. Tom worked here previously for eighteen years. For a couple of years, he, he strayed into a little fire department to the west of here, but he is coming back. We're excited to have him, and he's going to be a really excellent chief, I think, for our, for our team. We had a lot of involvement of employees, fire department employees and other members of the management team in selecting Tom, so I think there's a, there's a great base of support for him. We're also starting to work on the selection process for the police chief, and going through a very similar process right now, where I'm in the police department for six or seven two-hour blocks at times, at days and nights for over the next couple of weeks, meeting with employees and hearing information from them about what the profile of a chief is they'd, they'd like to see here, and then how do we go about finding that person? So that, that process has just begun. I want to note that the Quinn's Cup is this weekend. This is a joint effort that the city is, is doing with the family of Quinn Kirsch, who died in, in 2013, the eight-year-old boy from myocarditis. His family wanted to sponsor a hockey tournament in his, to honor him, of mites and squirts. So there's eight mite teams that are going to play four-on-four, eight squirt teams that are going to play three-on-three. And it's going to be out on Centennial Lakes on a beautiful Saturday morning at nine o'clock. It's, I think it's just going to be a very, very, very nice event, so we're happy we get to, to do that in conjunction with the Winter Ice Festival, which was scheduled on that date anyway. Three quick items to talk about.
That's January twelfth.
That is this Saturday.
January eleventh.
January eleventh.
What, what was the time again?
Nine AM. It starts at nine AM. Three quick updates for you on stewardship, because I think it's important that we remind ourselves of this sometime. One of them happened earlier tonight, and I think it's worthy of, of pointing out, and that's the France Avenue project. Councilmembers know this, but I think the public is not generally, doesn't generally know this, that we had the opportunity to award that same project that we awarded earlier tonight, a contract of about three-point-six million, about halfway through the year in 2013. It was over our budget, it was way over our budget, and the staff and council had a very good discussion about it, decided that we didn't want to spend that much over our budget. So we rejected the bids, we kind of repressed that project for a year. We went back to, to the, to the market, and we got a three-million-dollar bid tonight. And so we really did save ourselves six-hundred thousand dollars, which is not an insignificant amount of money. So that is good. Another example of good stewardship comes from staff, and this comes specifically from somebody you may not even have met yet, Tim Barnes. We hired Tim Barnes earlier this year to be our facilities manager. And Tim, after the hailstorm of August sixth, began to take a look at our property. You know, everybody was looking at their own roofs, but we began to look at our own property. And we brought travelers in, and we, right now, are kind of, are kind of circling in on about a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar insurance settlement for the hail damage that we, that we suffered to city facilities during that time. So that number could go up a little, it could go down a little, but we're preparing a, a plan, and again, a proposal we'll bring back to council to accept the, accept the settlement, and also then how we would propose to, to spend that money on some of those, some of those roof projects that it's required for.
I have a question about, about Mr. Barnes. So has he been out doing kind of an inventory of our current facilities?
Yes.
And maintenance needs and the schedule and things like that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And you know, a facility is, a good facilities guy or, or person has all, lots of connections. You know, they, they have connections with carpet people and lighting people and HVAC people, and they, they work those connections to, to get us really competitive, good deals, and make sure that the thing that we wanted fixed gets fixed at the price that we want it fixed at. I wish I could do that as a homeowner, but I'm not good at that. I maybe I'll, maybe I'll hire Tim to work for me, too. We are doing, something I wanted to make the council aware of is, I think you know that the school district is doing a demographics study to update their demographics, and they've hired Hazel Reinhardt to do that work for them. We're collaborating with the school on this project to look at the, the demographics, not so that we will get access to that same demographic information from the school district, but also to, to ask Hazel to gather the same information for the rest of the town that's outside of the school district. We're a town that is growing. We're seeing some demographic shift in the kind of people that live here. And when you think of, we're in 2014, so the, the 2010 data from the census is really based on 2008 or '09 sometimes, and 2020 is, so we're right in the middle of, of two census periods, and, and for a few thousand dollars, I think we're going to get ahold of some, some very good and reliable data that we can use to make good decisions with. Finally, a question I needed, I need some input from you on tonight, perhaps, if you, if you have it, is how you would like us to go about the bridge design for Fifty-Fourth Street. We have, we need to be able to have an approved bridge design with the Edina stamp of approval from the council sometime late February, early March. So in one of those, one of those two council meetings is when that is going to come to you. With the, the way that we left that project and the elevation of the bridge, there aren't as many interesting architectural and design options available to us because we, we don't have, because of the way that the elevation is going to be somewhat flat and somewhat low for the bridge. There certainly are design elements that you can make on the sides and how the sidewalks are placed and so on. But our proposal to you would be that we offer a public meeting, that we take public comment, input, ideas on what that bridge design should be, that Chad and, and the SEH group use that public input to put together a design, and that we advance that design up to the council for an approval before it goes off to MnDOT and anybody else who has to review it. It's a fairly compressed time period, but it's also a pretty low-cost time period. We spent a lot of money and time doing a pretty deep public engagement process for the road design, so what I'm proposing to you is something quite different than that, is a short, it's not ignoring the public, it's taking their input, but it's not a, a long, interactive process where we go back and forth, back and forth.
You're doing a charrette, open house?
Yeah, you might call it, call it that. I mean, I don't think we can just walk in with a blank piece of paper and say, what do you all think this should look like? We, we're going to have to do a little bit of leading to show what their options are, but I think we can, I think we can produce a design that, that has resident input and has your stamp of approval in the timeframe that we're talking about.
Member Bennett.
I think everyone's time will be better spent if any requirements, I know there's been some reference of what the watershed district will require, if all of those things are known in advance. And any limits that those place on design are known going into it, then I think everybody's time will be better spent. Also, appreciated your comment about things like height and the, the possibility of a pathway under, both of which I, I recall were eliminated.
Yep.
On December tenth. And that, I think, also will be a time saver for people to understand that things that were on the table before are not being brought back on the table. It's just a question of moving toward the final design with knowledge of whatever requirements apply.
Right. Given the, given the previous parameters approved by the council. Right.
Thank you.
Member Swenson.
I'm the one that made the motion, and all I said is I would give them the opportunity for input. So you have offered that opportunity. I agree with Member Bennett that it's really important to talk about what can and can't be done based on other entities of government that have a final say on it. The only other things we said was there was a sidewalk on both sides, and that, that if possible, the railings were open for, you know, for the visual ability to look across the creek. So I think in the, we already stated a bunch of things in, in the motion, but the motion really only said that they would, that there would be opportunity for public input. I only expected it once, and you've basically come up with something that I foresaw as part of what would happen.
Okay. Here's one of my concerns is, I don't know what kind of experience SEH has in bridge design. I do know that LHB, that we've used before, has been asked by the state of Minnesota, I think, to inventory every historic bridge in the state. They are experienced at working at, on these types of projects, and it seems to me like for you as a city manager and for Mr. Milner, it would at least be worth a conversation with them, because I think this is a critical piece of infrastructure that needs to look its best. And this might be an element that, that folks in the neighborhood and us on the council and everybody else needs a little bit of guidance on from someone or some entity that has a lot of experience in looking at historic bridges. Because I think we all concur, we want it to be a charming bridge that reflects the character of that neighborhood, which the existing one does not, in a way, because it's all worn out. But there are elements of the existing bridge that we wanted to continue, and that was the, the elevation of it, maybe the side railing with wrought iron. I mean, I don't know exactly what, what it should look like, but I, I know that there are companies out there like LHB, Architectural Firm, that have a wealth of experience in this area, and I think it'd be worth at least a conversation with them to see if they'd be worth retaining to assist us in this.
All right.
All right. Very good. That is. All right. One other thing that you, that you made me think about was, I forgot to mention to council members, that I got a call from somebody about a ribbon cutting over at Living Waters, and the person told me that they are fifty percent occupied after ten weeks. Pretty impressive, so. All right. There's no more business for the council, we're going to adjourn it and go into the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority agenda. Council meeting is dismissed.
Can I just ask, if Councilmember Bennett, that meeting will be here for, I think you said January third?
January fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Wednesday the fifteenth.
All right. Calling to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting for January seventh, two thousand fourteen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Huglin?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda, but Member Swenson and I were just having a sidebar, and we discovered something that was missing from the agenda, so Member Swenson is going to move to modify the agenda.
I'm going to move to modify the meeting agenda by adding what is for us called Agenda Item Three, but it's not, that's the approval of the meeting, and it really should be Resolution twenty-fourteen rescinding the authorization to acquire property at thirty-nine forty-four West Forty-Ninth Street. And could I renumber that as Agenda Item Seven, and then eight would be adjournment?
All right. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I, I think Mr. Newendorf, we asked, I had that on the agenda initially, and he had me take it off because the action for the condemnation was only taken by the city, not by the HRA.
Okay, then it's still in the packet, so we can ignore that and go back to the original meeting agenda. I'll move approval for that.
Second.
Motion, second, to adopt a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Discussion, we need a motion and a second.
I have a question, and that is, I recall that the public hearing was held in front of of...
HRA. And that could have been for, that's probably related to how it was going to be financed.
Okay.
But not the eminent domain action itself.
Okay, so that was...
There was no resolution adopted by the HRA.
Okay, we moved into an HRA meeting for the public hearing.
We had the hearing because it was scheduled, then we went back to the city council meeting, and the city council ordered, adopted the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
So all those in favor of the form of meeting agenda that we have in front of us this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 3rd, is there a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes for December 3rd, 2013, for the HRA discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Reappointment of members to the Edina Housing Foundation, we've got a motion in front of us to reappoint Douglas Mayo and Mary Kay Mcnee to the Edina Housing Foundation, to terms expiring February 1, 2017. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on that particular matter. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. And then we have a final action here is the approval of the France Avenue Improvements Award of Bid, that's consistent with what we did as a council earlier this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on this particular matter. Approval of bid for the France Avenue Improvements, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Any more business for the HRA? HRA stands adjourned.